It's 6 o'clock. We're about ready to get started. Anyone who wants to make a comment can please pick up a blue card, fill it out, and they'll call on you.
You are twisted. How did you even come up with that? Look at this. My kids, they're being standing up in the world. You are.
I can't believe you use a plastic model.
Now I have this hydro flask.
I think Michael has some already.
Yes, I have some already.
Do you need your gavel? Vice Mayor Pro Tem, it's 6:01.
Don't need that at all. Good evening, everybody, and welcome. All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to this edition of Lake Worth Beach Workshop with the... Clerk, please call the role, please.
Mayor Pam Triolo is not in tonight. Vice Mayor Andy Amoroso is also absent from the meeting. Commissioner Scott Maxwell.
Here.
Commissioner Omari Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Herman Robinson.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you'll please rise and help us with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Robinson.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This mic's a little bit hot. Can we?
It's hot.
Then I'm gonna sit back and... Can you all hear me? Okay, good. Okay, City Manager, can you give us an introduction as to why we are here this lovely evening at 105 degrees outside?
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners. Tonight is a workshop regarding accessory dwelling units. A lot of the information and discussion has been brought forward by Commissioner Hardy, and he's gotten some presentation materials and actually an expert together to present to the Commission for Discussion tonight. So without any further ado, I think it would be appropriate, Vice Mayor Pro Tem, to turn it over to Commissioner Hardy.
Where is Commissioner Hardy?
He's hiding down at the staff table.
Okay, what do you got for us, Commissioner Hardy?
Vice Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Robinson, Madam Attorney, Mr. City Manager, here's Kristi Dodson of Cronberg Wall to give a presentation about ADUs.
Mr. Hardy, before we start, can you tell us how long this presentation will take?
South of 20 minutes.
Well, how... Can we make it 10 minutes? Because that's typically what we give everybody for presentation.
She'll go as fast as she can. I checked it with Mike ahead of time. She'll go as fast as she can. She made the presentation. I hope that she would be able to finish it. And this presentation is again being given in lieu of a staff presentation.
In lieu of?
In lieu of.
City Manager, so staff will not be presenting tonight?
We had some information...
They will present some things; they will not present other things.
But they'll be able to respond for questions?
Sure.
Help me out, City Manager.
It's my understanding that we had some presentation material, Mr. Stivers, that's after the consultant makes their presentation that's available, so...
As needed.
As needed, if there's questions.
So, Commissioner Hardy, your presenter is going to present, and city staff will fill the blanks. Is that what we're hearing?
Yes. The presenter will cover the topic of ADUs and will basically give information about it and some information about, you know, some site plan stuff. And staff will give information about the process and about the current state of, you know, land use regulations here in the city about ADUs.
Very well. I would really appreciate if your presentation could be limited to as close to 10 minutes as possible, because that is normally how we conduct our meetings.
Four minutes, talking about it.
Please, go ahead. Your turn.
Yes. All right, I will speak quickly. We have 10 minutes. Can everybody hear me okay? Just get a quick wave. Everyone, we're good? Okay, thanks. I'm Kristi Dodson from Cronberg Wall, and while I'm introducing myself, I'm gonna switch over my screen to our presentation. Again, I'm gonna go through this quickly. This will be available later, so if you see information graphics that interest you, those will be available to you later. Again, we're talking about accessory dwelling units here. Just a little bit about who we are. We are architects, planners, urban designers, historic preservationists. Our goal is to make neighborhoods better, and that's what we're all here talking about. We often work at the intersection of adaptive reuse, neighborhood scale redevelopment, neighborhood infill. So these are ones that should sound familiar to Lake Worth Beach and would be applicable to your... A lot of the challenges that you're facing. So why we care? We believe that walkable areas with existing infrastructure are easiest targets for things like sprawl, housing shortages, lack of downtown vibrancy, and lack of overall resiliency. So these are some challenges that should sound familiar to you. So why are we talking about housing choice? Why do we need this? The data suggests that a majority of adults, so 60% of adults, want to live in walkable neighborhoods. These are communities like yours in Lake Worth Beach, but only 5% to 10% of our available housing stock actually exists in these walkable neighborhoods. So there's a massive housing shortage, which leads to skyrocketing prices. And when we look at how homes have been built over the last 70 years, it is a pretty reasonable outcome. So starting in 1950, our homes were an average of 980 square feet, whereas today they're closer to 3,000. So we've built homes very largely, and it's made them very expensive, and it's taken up scarce land and resources. So it's just less land for people to exist in communities like Lake Worth Beach. So whenever we're talking about the context of your community, we're not just talking about shortages of walkable neighborhoods. You have walkable neighborhoods; it's that there's a housing shortage within these neighborhoods. And this should sound familiar, so in Palm Beach County where you're located, for every dollar of income that people earn, 40 cents of that goes to housing and 26 cents goes to transportation. That means 66% of people's income is going to living and transportation. People are having to drive very far to live places affordably. And on top of that, you are expected to grow by 6,000 people in the next 18 years. So we really need to think about addressing these problems. These are projections by the planning office in Palm Beach County. So we're gonna have to think about housing these additional people. So one of the tools that we're talking about today are ADUs, and we're gonna talk about a lot of the advantages that accessory dwelling units have for your community. So what are ADUs? If people aren't familiar, they're small houses or apartments that exist on the same property as a single-family residence. They're generally located within, attached to, or detached from the main residence. So they look something like this. They're everything from accessory apartments to alley flats, garage apartments, granny flats. ADUs aren't just one thing. They can exist in a lot of different ways, and that's what's great about them, is you can really tailor them to the community character that you have and that you really love. So I'm gonna go through the main benefits of ADUs and talk about why they are good for both people and communities. The first major benefit is that they provide housing options for all ages, so flexibility really matters. And by prohibiting ADUs in single-family zoning, it prevents diverse housing choices, so it creates less flexibility as people try to age in place or accommodate different family types. So what we know is our families look a lot like this. We have roommates, young professionals like myself, middle-career professionals, empty nesters, and growing families. And when we look at only single-family, we really can accommodate about two of those types of families. What we need to start thinking about is how single-family neighborhoods plus ADUs can really support flexibility as people age in their neighborhoods, and it creates opportunities for them to age in place. And that's the next point. We really have a life cycle as we go through our lives of starting off as young families, and what ADUs would allow us to do would allow us to rent out the ADU for extra income. And then as our family grows, we can expand and maybe have an older child live in the ADU or purchase extra space for parents. And then as we become empty nesters, ADUs actually allow us to stay on the property and rent out the main house. So what you can see is throughout the life cycle, this isn't just different groups of people. It's actually the same family that is able to exist on the property long-term, and that's a really huge advantage of ADUs. The second is that they're environmentally and economically sustainable. Even, you know, we have a lot of green building techniques, but just by nature, ADUs require fewer resources. They're much smaller, and they're being built on lots with existing buildings. You're not building a lot of road infrastructure, sewer infrastructure. You're able to use what already exists. They require less energy. They're smaller footprints, that also means they're much cheaper to live in. So that means you're not paying so much for energy and water and utilities. And generally, ADUs work very well in historic neighborhoods that are close to walkable areas, so they encourage less car trips. Traffic congestion and parking is always a massive concern, and by putting more housing close to your downtown, you're actually decreasing the amount of cars that people are having to drive. They're also very economically flexible. This is an example of a development that we've done here in Atlanta, where we've compared houses that don't have ADUs. So a house in this neighborhood would require a family to make $150,000 a year to afford this house. But once you have an ADU, even if you're a two-car household, that same family only has to make about $110,000 a year. And then if you reduce that to one car, that family only has to make $80,000 to live in this neighborhood. And that's a massive group of people that can now afford to live in an area that would have been unaffordable otherwise. And the third most important part that I'm gonna spend the most time on is that these ADUs support communities. So downtowns really matter. We need to focus on increasing our housing choice and housing diversity in areas with access to daily needs without the car. What does that mean? ADUs are able to support your downtown businesses because it gets more people living close by where they can shop locally. When people can be within a 5- to 10-minute walk of daily goods, your downtown thrives because those people can walk there and they can support that development. Another thing is that design really matters. ADUs are a perfect way to design for existing neighborhoods, and they preserve existing character. They also provide housing choice at the same time. So these are a couple examples of ADUs here in Atlanta, where we have built behind historic homes, and you can barely see them from the street, but they are these really cute cottages in the back. You see here where you have an empty nester, and they're moving in and renting out their main structure. And here's another example, and because this house is on a hill, you can't even see the ADU in the backyard. These are very appropriately scaled for the neighborhood, and they provide great housing choice for families. Another example is attached ADUs. These are really great ways to provide housing in lieu of cars. So this is where garages would normally go on houses, but it's actually an ADU. And ADUs are also very good for small lots. So this is in Brunswick, Georgia. It's a small town in South Georgia where we drew ADUs behind cottages, and these are on lots that are 30 feet wide and 50 feet deep. And something that's really important about these is they have alley access. I'm gonna talk a lot about that because y'all have these amazing alleys that you really need to utilize. They're incredible asset. And you can fit ADUs behind these really small lots when you have alleys, which you do in your neighborhoods. So here's my alleys matter pitch. I've already talked about it. Alleys provide access to off-street parking, so it gets cars off the curb. And it also allows you to have these really beautiful streetscapes for great sidewalks, street trees, bike lanes, and alleys make ADUs possible. So this is just a snapshot I grabbed of Fort... Of Lake Worth, and it is not anywhere in particular. I didn't choose it for a reason. It was just something that seemed like it was emblematic of typical development in your city. And what I wanted to show is that these alleys really give you these beautiful walkable streets with great trees. You have access to parking in the back of the property, so it's not in the front of the homes. And what these ADUs can add are eyes on the street. So that's what we call when you activate areas, and it's a big safety advantage. So when you're putting ADUs on these alleys, you're getting people back there, and it makes them much safer because you have eyes on the alley. The other thing is that scale matters with the growth that you're gonna be experiencing in the coming years. ADUs are a really fantastic way to disperse the growth in an incremental way, so this is something that is much more comfortable for neighborhoods and much more controllable and in line with the character, because it's not something big and out of context like an apartment building. And something I also want to touch on is that history really matters. ADUs are really an American tradition. We've had these since the beginning of settlements in the United States, and they help build character of the existing neighborhoods we love. So the existing neighborhoods are the way they are today, in part because of ADUs, because they're able to support a really diverse group of people and ages and incomes. And so our pitch here is that let's allow our levelable neighborhoods to be those once more. So if you remember this aerial that I touched on earlier, something I wanted to point out, and I didn't notice until afterwards, is that there's actually about 14 structures in here that could be classified as ADUs. And they may be. They were probably built historically. You have a lot of development from 100 years ago, and that's probably when these structures were built. And so these are just snapshots that I took in Google Earth of ADUs that already exist in your community, and they're really beautiful examples. Like, these are examples that I would share to communities and say, "These are fantastic examples of ADUs. You already have these in your community," and they add a really rich character to the area. Something I briefly wanted to point out is the ADUs that exist on corners. You have a lot of cottage lots, and what this does is it allows people to have ADUs and eventually parcel that off and to become homeowners themselves. So it's a great way for renters to then become homeowners to invest long-term in their communities. And I also just wanted to throw out a quick example of... This is your existing zoning code, so a lot of your lots are 50 by 135, and this is a typical single-family house, about 1,500 square feet with a 550-square-foot attached ADU. These are your setbacks that are required, and it fits quite comfortably on the lot. This shows driveway parking in the front as well as two spaces off the alley. I call this the good example because generally we want to keep the parking away from the front of the house, but it is possible to fit four spots. A better example would be for the two spaces in the back off the alley, really utilize that asset and to have two spaces dedicated on the street for street parking. And the best one would be to have the ADU on top of a garage, so you can still have the two spaces in the back or not, and then you could actually pull the parking into a garage and then have the ADU exist on top of that. So briefly, I wanted to touch on some of the legislative barriers.
Very briefly.
About the benefits. Yes, briefly. Legislative barriers, so off-street parking requirements. Generally, this is expensive, and it's more feasible with alleys, but it creates barriers to building these in historic forms. Owner occupancy requirements makes bank lending very hard, and that's the most difficult thing about building ADUs is getting the bank lending, so bringing in that barrier is really important. And then tying the size to the ADU to the main house is really detrimental in historic neighborhoods. So in historic neighborhoods where you have small houses, you're essentially penalizing people for having a small historic house. And if you tie the size of the ADU to the main house, it incentivizes tear downs, which we do not want at all. We're trying to preserve neighborhood character. So it's important that that also is not a barrier. So to cover some hot topics that people are usually concerned with, preserving neighborhood character, that's something that I've talked about a lot. It's something that ADUs do really well. Something that you can do to ensure that is mandating the location of the ADU to be behind the main structure, and also encourage attached ADUs, which generally are the back of the property, and they're much less noticeable. Another is adequate parking. People are concerned you're adding more units. I know this is from Portland, but they have the highest percentage of ADUs in the entire country, and they've shown that adding ADUs in the back has added about one extra car every six blocks. It's really, really small, so be sure your parking is data-driven and isn't driven out of some other context. Require parking only if it's removed from the main structure. Waive it when you're near downtown. People are walking generally anyways. And allow people to count on street parking, so being very careful about how you allow parking is important. And then people are always concerned with existing unpermitted ADUs. I showed you some examples of that. By legalizing ADUs, it actually allows the city to come in, inspect these, make sure they're safe places, and it allows the owners to fix them up and become viable housing options for people. So generally, whenever they're unsanctioned ADUs, they're not allowed. They're used, we find, in most cities as short terminals or Airbnb's, and that's when they're not allowed. But when they become legalized, then people actually can renovate them, and they're able to rent them long-term, and it's much more stabilizing for a neighborhood if they're legalized. So where do we go from here? This was past. These are just key takeaways. If you remember anything, remember this. Preserve and adopt what you have. You already have these in a lot of communities. Let's preserve our neighborhood character and adopt these ADUs because they already exist. Allow for more of what you love. Again, talking about neighborhood character, these ADUs are here. They make your community unique, and let's make sure our codes allow for that uniqueness to happen. And then explore new context-sensitive options. So as this legislation shapes and as people have this discussion, what are ways that are context-specific to Lake Worth Beach that can help address ADUs? And I'll be here for questions. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Kristi. Commissioner Hardy, at this point, do you want to ask some questions of your consultant?
If any of you guys have questions for Kristi, if not, then Kristi can go about her Tuesday evening.
Well, I would ask, you know, whether she goes about her Tuesday evening or not. I think it would be appropriate if we all, at least the electeds, and then make it a matter of public record, have this PowerPoint presentation.
Certainly.
Because I really wish I could have had that to write my notes as she was going through this. And I appreciate her condensing this down from a 20-minute presentation to about a 14-minute presentation, so I appreciate that. Commissioner Robinson, do you have any questions?
I appreciate the educational opportunity that Commissioner Hardy has provided for us.
Okay. Well, with that, then, I'll thank you so much, Kristi, for your input and your enlightenment. And where do we go from here, Mr. Hardy, with her?
If she's... If you guys don't have any questions, I don't have any questions for her. She can go, and we can close out the video conference.
Okay, very well. Again, thank you. Kristi, do you have any last-minute comments you want to make before you go on for your evening?
Now, if you have any further questions, please feel free to reach out. Our website's here, and again, we'll be providing the presentation, so feel free to email me directly with any questions you may have.
Again, thank you so much for your presentation. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too.
I hope one of us knows how to turn this off. I'll pause this. Thank you behind you.
Okay, Commissioner Hardy, where are we going with staff on this?
Staff has a... Staff has a process about... Excuse me, a presentation about process, the current state of the law, and what changes in the law would be required to accommodate ADUs.
You want time?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Good evening. Mark Stivers, Deputy Director for Community Sustainability for the Record. Thank you for the opportunity to go through this tonight. First point I want to make clearly is, this is not a new tool for the city of Lake Worth Beach. We currently allow accessory dwelling units in a significant number of zoning districts in the city. So we'll go through that. We'll talk about that in our presentation. I think the thing that we're looking at tonight is the possibility of expanding this and possibly changing the regulations which exist today for ADUs. Start out with something we want to keep in front of everybody, and that is the mission statement that was recently adopted by the Commission on our strategic plan. I just want to highlight that we are a city of neighborhoods, and this is something that the city is very proud of, that we have 18 neighborhood associations here that are critical in who we are and how we function. And I think working through and with these neighborhoods, and we've been able to build a good relationship with them as we go forward, I think that's critical as we move forward on these types of issues. So she already ran through this. I'll skip what they are. Here are some pictures of typical ADUs. Within our own city code, here's how we define them, and that is that they're known as either a mother-in-law's cottage or granny flat or something like that. It's an additional unit that is a complete dwelling unit, so it contains a kitchen, a bathroom, and living area. And that is different than simply adding an addition on the back of your house with an additional bedroom and a bathroom that you may want to add if you have an aging parent or somebody who wants to come in and live with you. That's just an addition to a house. An ADU is actually a separate distinct dwelling unit, and I think that's an important distinction to make. Yeah?
Where do they go? On what kind of lots do they go, according to the definition?
So according to the definition right now, it's... And I'll get to the zoning districts where they are allowed. They are on lots that contain a single-family or a two-family dwelling currently. The other thing I want to point out quickly, and I'm not going to read all this, is state law. If you ever have trouble at night sleeping, read state law. It's good for you. But the state had already anticipated the idea of having ADUs, and what they say in the top paragraph is that "With the increased need for housing affordability, the state legislature saw a need for this as a housing opportunity around the state." This legislation, however, then, if you look at the next... That's their definition. If you look at the next section of this, and this is under the same statute, it really focuses on these two paragraphs, which say that if you're adopting ADUs under this clause, that there must be a deed restriction on that property that binds it to being an affordable house. It doesn't mean every ADU in the city has to be affordable. If you're adopting under this statute, that must bind them as affordable housing. And I don't want to speak for the board, but my understanding is this is not the intent is to adopt an ADU change under this section. So we are not looking for additional affordable housing, per se, under the strict definition, but I think we're looking for housing that is affordable to a wide range of people, if I can say it that way. So the next thing we have to look at is a comprehensive plan, and did we anticipate housing types in this? And I don't want to go through everything, but the three main goals in the housing and neighborhood element of the comprehensive plan really do speak to the need for a supply of housing that has a variety of residential types, to assure that all citizens have decent and safe sanitary housing, and to develop and implement strategies to reinforce Lake Worth Beach as a community of neighborhoods. So you'll see that theme throughout the comprehensive plan, is that we are truly a city of neighborhoods. In the future land use element of the comprehensive plan, we then lay out and describe different land use categories. And so, under the policy 1.1.1.2... See, that one time's slow, and you're good. What we say is this, is that in this single-family residential district, the homes do not include accessory apartments or facilities that permit occupancy by more than one family or household. I point this out not that we can't do it, but should we want to move forward and adopt a code change to bring accessory dwelling units into the single-family residential district, this paragraph would have to be amended in the comprehensive plan. So step one, we're talking about a comprehensive plan amendment to allow these. This is Table 1 in the comprehensive plan, and I'll draw your attention to this box, which talks about the single-family residential. And the very top bar of this shows that it allows seven dwelling units per acre with a maximum of 30 feet and a floor area ratio, which we'll talk about briefly as needed, In our... Going back to the strategic plan, in the second pillar, we talk about strengthening our community of neighborhoods, and point number one really talks again about the diversifying housing options. I point all this out to say that we have been fairly consistent in our policy documents to say that we are a city that really wants to look at a wide range of housing opportunities within the city. So within the zoning map, if you will, here are the districts where they're currently allowed. The single-family, two-family 14, which allows a density of 14 units per acre, the multifamily 20, multifamily 30. Multifamily 40 is described in the code, but we currently don't have any land zone that within the city. Mixed-use East and the mixed-use federal highway. So those districts are the area where we currently allow accessory dwelling units.
Can we jump in at any time?
Let him finish, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay.
I realize as we're doing this, it would probably have been a good idea to put a map up, but as the speaker was talking, these districts are the ones that are within a radius around the core downtown area. So we currently allow accessory dwelling units within the 5- to 10-minute walk of our downtown area.
Folks, if you would...
Again, I should have put a map. I apologize for that. So I want to just do a little bit of analysis and looking at what we have. Our single-family residential zoning district is about 39, almost 40% of the land mass within the city itself. And it's... If you break this out, it's... All of our residential uses account for about 53% of our land here in the city. Our mixed-use zones, which do include allowances for residential uses as well as commercial uses, that accounts for about 18%. Our industrial's about 9%, and public and all others equal about 20% of our land. If you break... If you break down just the residential districts, the single-family residential is about 75% of all the land zones strictly residential within the city. So from this, looking at purely residential zoning, a big portion of our current zoning code and the land mass does not permit these type of housing units within the city. So here is the zoning classification for single-family residential. If you look at the very last line, it says the SFR, Single Family Residential District, implements the single-family residential land use category, what I talked about earlier. What it says is here, provision is made for a limited number of non-residential uses, and the intent is for, the primary intent is to permit the development of one single-family structure on a lot. So point number one we talked about is the need to look at an amendment to the comprehensive plan. Two would be an amendment to our land development regulations to change this section of the code to then allow accessory dwelling units within the single-family residential district. Here's the basic standards of the single-family residential district, the minimum lot size. In a recent amendment, if you guys remember, we dropped this down to 5,000 square feet. Maximum height of the buildings, we looked at, are 30 feet for, or two stories for the principal structure, and all accessory structures currently are 24 feet. Where this comes into play is if your accessory dwelling unit is attached to the house, you can say it's still part of the principal structure. If it's a detached unit on the lot, then the current height limit would be 24 feet for those units. Density remains the same at 7. The building coverage, and Commissioner Hardy and I have had many discussions on lot coverage versus building coverage, this is the size of the footprint of the buildings on the lot. We allow for a small lot is 40%. A small lot is up to about 5,000 square feet. A medium-sized lot is 35% of the building coverage, and that's up to about 7,500 square feet. And for larger lots, which are 75 and over, you're allowed 30% of the lot to be covered by the building. Now, the other thing that we do look at is total lot coverage, which includes all your other hard surfaces, your driveways, sidewalks, and other materials like that. So two different categories of looking at lot coverage. We say in the standard that each dwelling unit shall contain at least a living room, kitchen, bedroom, and bathroom, and shall have a minimum of 800 square feet in our current code. So if we're looking at allowing for accessory dwelling units to be smaller than 800 square feet, and as the Speaker President pointed out, a lot of the cottages we have in our historic district are currently around 800 square feet. So with the cottage industry and looking at the single-family zone districts that are in the historic districts, we have a large number of small houses already. So looking at the size, the accessory dwelling unit, and I think she made a good point in this, would really have to be something we'd look at in these districts. Do you want the ADU to dwarf or be larger than, equal to, or smaller than? Again, if we get direction to move forward as staff, these are things that we'll look at before we bring it back to the Commission to actually discuss further. Here's the current regulations that we have. And again, I won't go through all these and read them to you, but the idea is that we allow the secondary or accessory dwelling units in those districts. The purpose is to provide additional housing within the designated residential districts. Design standards we have, and I'll point out a couple of key ones, is on existing lot, and I already mentioned this, a single-family dwelling must currently exist on the lot or be constructed in conjunction with a secondary unit. Only one secondary dwelling unit shall be allowed for each parcel. Unit size, the secondary dwelling unit cannot exceed 60% of the habitable floor area of the primary residence. And that's what I was talking about. If we have some of the smaller houses in the historic district, they're already 800 square feet, you're looking at a very small dwelling unit currently. We have setbacks. And if you saw in some of her examples, in a lot of typical quality use of the lot, if you put the accessory dwelling unit in the rear, and you have to meet side mirror setbacks on some of our narrow lots, and she looked at our 50-foot-wide lots, and to be honest, a lot of our original platted lots here in the city are 25 feet. They're 25 by 135, which would make, it's nice for a nice shotgun house, but with your accessory dwelling unit in the back, there would be no room for parking unless you tuck this into the side in the corner in the rear. So I just want to go over one last slide, and as staff, some of the things that we looked at that are issues we'd want to consider should the Commission ask us to move forward with this. It's this one that they require to have a rental license. Currently in the city, that's one of the issues we deal with, is looking at number of homes that have been rented without going after rental or not applying for a residential rental license. Currently, our code does not allow for vacation rentals, such as vacation rental by owner, VBO, BRBO, or Airbnb, those type of units. I know this is an issue that is a hot topic around the nation right now, and is something that I know is, hopefully is going to be coming back to this Commission to discuss further in terms of a policy for us. But currently, we do not allow them. We have to look at the stormwater fee. We do have a stormwater fee that's calculated per unit. We have to ensure proper addressing. And I don't want to minimize this. As a former EMT and someone who had to drive through areas, you want to make sure that you know, if there's a person injured, you can get to that address. That's just on the emergency medical health side. I look at the Sheriff's Department here, and if they ever get called out, they need to know where they're going. If it's a fire, if it's an emergency, if it's any type of a police or emergency issue, we need to make sure people can get to where they're going. So addressing is critical. They talked about having access to, quality access to the unit. And a lot of these would then be, if we put them in behind the principal unit, we're talking about having full access to a second dwelling unit off of our alleys. We'd have to look at the fact that a lot of our alleys are not in a current condition that can handle a volume of traffic. So it's something that the Commission would have to consider, is the need to ensure that the alleys are then remain open and passable, fully passable, so that people can access the units from the rear. Not an impossible issue. I just think something that we have to be aware of as we walk forward and look at, that we have to make sure the alleys are accessible. Parking needs, it's always, as long as I've been doing this, always comes up as a hot topic, is how do people park? How do they get there? We were in South Florida. The heat index today was what, 109? 110? My weatherman here? That's something we have to consider, is how people do get around. And in the heat of summer, and Commissioner Hardy, we've talked about making sure that we have shade trees in and growing. I think we need to get there. But we have to look at the fact that people still want and need to drive around in this community. Public transit is not at the same level as a major metropolis area, so we have to look at the ability for people to have access to that if they don't have a vehicle or a motorized vehicle to go around in. And I'll put on the end, something else that I see is very important, is a whole step to head concern, and that is truly looking at crime prevention through good, well-thought-out design criteria to ensure that we know what's going on, and our friends here in the Sheriff's Department can get to where they need to go and ensure that they have the ability to handle any situation that comes before them. So those are the key issues we see as a staff moving forward. I think the purpose of the workshop tonight is really to look to the Commission and say, is this something that we want to expand in our city? And as I said before, we already have them here. This is something that is currently allowed. So do we want to expand it into our single-family residential neighborhoods, or do we keep them where they are? And so with that, Lieutenant Maxwell, I'll turn it back over to you. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steivers. Mr. Commissioner Robinson, please. You had a question earlier.
I was going to ask about a map showing where ADUs are and where they're not allowed, just as a visual.
I will look for that.
I know that you showed this percentage, but...
Is that your only question?
Well, I asked about why this wasn't included in the LDR when we came up and reviewed the existing LDR. And I'd like Mr. Waters to give me his answer that he gave me when we were doing the LDR in the first place.
William Waters, Community Sustainability Director. Are you referring back to 2012 and 13?
The last LDR we had, when ADUs were not included in single-family zones.
Well, in Lake Worth, ADUs have never been included in the SFR district. When we were moving forward with the replacement of the zoning code back when I first got here in 2010 through 2012, there was a great ponderance of support to expand the single-family residential zoning districts. So they got bigger, and there were some neighborhoods that, where we had multifamily 20 and single-family 2 family 14, that those areas actually got smaller in the zoning districts. So that consequently did reduce the areas where ADUs could be built. Now, one avenue that we haven't really discussed is that we can look at the future land use map and broaden the areas that would allow single-family, two-family zoning to be designated or other types of residential other than single-family residential.
That wasn't my question. My question was why the ADUs were not included in the single-family.
They're not allowed in single-family, by the definition.
My question was why you weren't including them.
Because of the definition that we had allows a single-family residential building on a lot. There was no interest from anyone on the probably 19 different workshops we had between the Planning Board, the Historic Resource Preservation Board, and the City Commission to change the definition of SFR to include more than one housing unit.
Thank you. Commissioner Hardy?
Thank you. First of all, I appreciate the presentation, Mark. Full of information, process-oriented. Can I ask you a question about our minimum lot size requirements for single-family homes?
So the minimum lot size right now is 5,000 square feet.
5,000 square feet. Okay. Now, there are 4,560, excuse me, 43,560 feet in an acre, right? So we're saying that you can build a home on a lot that's 5,000 square feet. That would basically put that home at smaller than a seventh of an acre. Is that...
Correct.
Okay. Could you explain how the seven units-per-acre density matches up with the minimum lot size requirements that we have, or whether there's a mismatch there?
There's not a mismatch, Commissioner. We looked at, when we lowered the minimum lot size, is the ability to legitimize the existing platted 25 by 135 lots. We have a lot of those. Some neighborhoods still have them as direct lots. Others have combined two or three lots together under unity of title. But those original platted lots still exist. So in order to remove some of the existing non-conformities, we said that if you have an existing lot that is the 25 by 135, your 5,000-square-foot lot would take you out of the non-conforming lot size status so that you can still do some development on your lot. That in no way changed the intensity or density of the zoning classification, which remained at seven units an acre.
Okay. And...
Thanks.
Could you go back in your presentation?
Can I interrupt you for just a second?
Yep.
Ladies that are standing back there, that would be the three really nice ladies right there. Would you mind if you, William, can you guys share that bench a little bit?
I'm up here on this bench. We may make them speak, so they might want to sit somewhere else.
Yeah, I was getting worn out just looking at you. Exactly. Everybody comfortable now? All right, go ahead.
In your presentation, you talked about the zoning districts that allow accessory dwelling units.
Correct.
Could you go back to that slide?
Correct.
So those are all the zoning districts that we allow ADUs currently.
Our current district, yes.
They are numerous.
Yeah.
Okay. On a land area basis, can we look at that pie chart again with the table? All right. So basically, we allow them in many, many zoning districts. But the zoning districts are kind of concentrated in certain places. So when you look at it, as far as the amount of land in the city on which we allow an ADU, the SFR, as far as residential zoning districts, SFR takes up 75% of it. Even if you were to add, for example, mixed-use East, mixed, you know...
It takes up 30, about 40% of the...
Of the overall land in the city.
Overall zoning. It's about 75% of those areas purely zoned for residential.
Right.
But the mixed-use districts, we take out of the pure residential zones, and we classify those as mixed-use districts.
Right. Okay. All right, those are my questions. I'm ready for discussion.
Very well. And where did Commissioner Robinson go? Were you abducted by aliens? You couldn't say goodbye? Just asking. All right.
Kimmy Johns.
Okay, here we go. We've got a number of folks that have blue cards. Who has a blue card out there that hasn't turned it in yet? Anybody? Can you turn those in if you wouldn't mind? Pass it to the front or whatever.
There's people in the other room? Just turning it over to the card, please.
Thank you. Folks, I'll give two or three calls for the blue cards, and final call, I will not take any more blue cards after that. So if you're inclined to make a comment or whatever, please do so. I can wait. I can wait.
Tough day for hydration. Sorry. And I don't usually drink.
Thank you so much.
I got sick. I mean, I was...
Sorry.
I was...
You can turn the blue cards into me.
Well, I want to get all the cards in first, and that's going to be it for blue cards. No stragglers.
Here, I'll take it. Thank you.
Folks, is there anybody else that has a blue card they want to turn in? This is last call.
Mark, do you have your email on your laptop?
Who puts it on?
I sent you something. Is it on the laptop?
I love it.
Scotty's on that end, so makes it easier.
Thank you.
Is it possible that we could show that on the screen at some point? Is there an email on that? There's not an email on that?
Okay, folks.
This lady still has...
Okay, I've got one more. One more, and then we'll get started. Write faster.
They'll explain it. They'll explain it.
Gotcha. I'll wait.
So what did I miss? I didn't miss anything.
Now you're going to tell him.
That's...
With yourself. You didn't miss anything. You missed nothing.
Thank you.
Took a card, any card?
Any card. Any card. Thank you, sir. Oops, I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I think we got a couple more.
I think they...
She looks like she's determined. She has that blue card look in her eye.
She's got some blue cards. We've got some, here, we've got some blue cards.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. There you go.
Folks, I believe that's it. I think we've gotten all the cards. There's nobody, last chance. That's it for blue cards, okay? So let's begin, shall we? If I mispronounce your name, it's probably because of your handwriting, maybe. Let's start with Claire Miller, please. Please, when you come up, you have two minutes. Be sure that you clearly state your name and your address, please. That's very important.
Hi, Claire Miller, 211 South J. I am very much in favor of it. I happen to have zoning on the lot where I live that allows them. But one of the things that I noticed in the presentation from Christine Dodson was that Portland, which apparently is, I tried to look it up online to see how long Portland's had an ADU and allowed in residential areas, and apparently the density of them is not that big. I mean, it's the most, has the most per capita of any place, but I just want to reassure the people that are against this that these are not cheap little, you know, it's not a glam tent, but this is a structure. It's going to cost $100 to $150 a square foot to build. They're not going to pop up all over your neighborhood immediately. It might be gradual. I would imagine within 10 years, there'd be maybe 10% of the lots that... I would imagine within 10 years, there'd be maybe 10% of the lots that have them. So don't panic. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Oh, boy. Is that Marie?
Panish.
Panish? Did I butcher your names?
Well, I didn't realize we built up a time to be?
Oh, I'll read it for you.
Sorry. Marina Parrish, I'm at 1610 North Lakeside. I came to this because this is actually something I'm really interested in, and I think there's prob, I'm guessing, okay, I don't have any statistics, but I would like to hold on to my house. I just got divorced. I have over half an acre. I would love to put up a little granny pod where my family can come stay. The kids have, you know, some more of a sense of extended family. Maybe I could rent out the cottage or the main house during the peak seasons. What, am I not? All right, I'm very loud, so. I can't think of a negative of doing this, other than people worrying that the things that are taken care of by law is that we pretty much already have in place. Noise, pollution, behavior issues, people that create all kinds of problems. I mean, a lot of that's taken care of just by the nature of the structures that we're talking about. Talking about families putting extra buildings where they live. So it's a lot of self-policing. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Betty Resch, followed by Anthony Morata. Betty?
Can we call up the next speaker in advance?
I just did.
No, but I mean, like, the person after Betty?
I just did.
Anthony Morata.
Thank you.
Oh, you did? That's right. I had Anthony on the mind.
Thanks for helping me.
He's ready to go.
Hi, Betty Resch, Lake Worth. First thing, there's a giant zoning map over behind the locked doors on Second Avenue North, and I'm wondering if we couldn't get something like a copy of that somewhere in City Hall. There's, you know, with some wall space in a hallway or something, so that it's not, it's really hard to look on the zoning map on the website. So that's really kind of just my request. I live in multifamily. I have a, was it two-car garage legally? There's a legally cottage behind me. It's wonderful. I love it. There's never been a problem with any of the people. And, you know, my plan is, if, God knows what's going to happen, I would live in the cottage, and I could rent out the big house. Or I could have a caretaker stay in the cottage. I think the level of anxiety, I think everybody should take a deep breath before we all get into like, yes or no, and we hate it, we love it. Because that just doesn't get us anywhere. So I would just like to have, let's keep an open mind. There's pros and cons, but from my own experience, and I've been in my house for 30 years, it's been great. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Anthony Morata, followed by Richard Stowe.
Thank you for hosting this workshop and giving us a chance to hear the thoughts. Anthony Morata, 327 North Lakeside Drive. I'm here to hear the discussion. I have an ADU in my yard. It's below the required footage to rent. When I bought my place, I knew that. I accepted it and knew that I was buying a single-family neighborhood. I'm not outright against them, but I have absolutely expressed my concerns when things are being put that we're just going to throw this open. And I think most people are interested to hear a reasonable discussion about how some of these things can work in. Again, though, we're concentrating on the single-family, single-family neighborhoods. So some of my concerns are about the density that's being created in those neighborhoods. Parking issues, enforcement issues. No knock against anybody, but I don't know if many people would grade the city of Lake Worth Beach as high in its enforcement ability. It's been working better at it, but when you throw open this thing and you're not even there just yet, it does create a lot of concerns, and people want to make sure that something like this is approached responsibly. And again, the primary item is going to be density. My general feeling is that it shouldn't be looked at as a citywide blanket. Which areas it may work for, which areas it may not work for. I'm certainly in favor of some minor tweaks, allowing someone to have a relative live there they care for. The example of the young lady who lives on a half-acre lot. If there's an interest from the community and the commission for something like this, the inputs in the neighborhood should be sought. We heard earlier multiple times that it's ingrained in the city that we are a city of neighborhoods, and I think the feedback from those neighborhoods collectively is very important and needs to be taken into account. With the visioning sessions coming up, that'd be a great time for each neighborhood and those owners to state how they feel about this, whether it'd be positive for them, or they feel it'd be a negative, as well as to look at tweaking the process, how it may go. But from a density standpoint, I'd like to see the density stick in the corridors, the mid, or Dixie Highway, and the downtown area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morata. Richard Stowe, followed by Jeannie Hovin? Did I get it right? Oh, yes, thank you so much.
Richard Stowe, 414 North Federal Highway. I have a few thoughts about this, the ADUs, as it pertains to Lake Worth. One is, I think we have a special opportunity in this town to start to, like, I would prefer if the ADUs were limited to historic districts. Number one. Number two, we have, we have parking requirements. I actually think we should not, we should have no minimum parking requirements. Number three, and these ADUs would work better in that environment. Number three, when considering building new accessory dwelling units, I would like to see special care made to looking at pervious surfaces within the lot. So you want to maximize the pervious surface and minimize, and in doing so, you can do that by, like, encouraging, like, a two-story versus a one-story accessory dwelling unit. So those are my three main points.
Thank you, Mr. Stowe. Jeannie Hovin, followed by Ann, oh my, Fairfax.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Jeannie Hovin, 1603 North Lakeside Drive. I brought along a copy of my survey of my property. I live on a 100 by 100-foot lot in a single-family residence, neighborhood, I'm sorry. I've lived in Palm Beach County my whole life. Guest cottages and guest houses have always been around and a benefit to living here, because many people have friends and relatives that wanted to visit and have a place to stay. 10 years ago, when my mother was in hospice care, we moved her into a cottage behind my sister's house in Lake Worth. She was able to sit in the garden and enjoy the quality of life she had always known, right to her last day. I live in Eden Place, which is a single-family neighborhood. I have a 100 by 100-foot lot with only a two-bedroom house. I have grown children that, if they come back to visit me, would have nowhere to stay. I just can't imagine why Lake Worth Beach would prevent me from adding a cottage so that someday they can have the house, and I can move into the cottage and have the peace of mind that my mom did.
Thank you. Ann Fairfax, please, followed by Anna Maria Hunt.
Ann Fairfax, 318 South J. I am in favor of ADUs. I commend Commissioner Hardy and others who are bringing this vital issue to the forefront. I just wanted to let you know, too, I'm writing a dissertation on ADUs, as it turns out. It's a bit of a coincidence. And I'm sending a survey around to historic neighborhood residents, and I'm also hoping to engage the commissioners to be able to, to have interviews with them. This all helps in my research. My research then helps others in their research on ADUs. We have a gap in the research on historic districts. I thought Richard Skew's comment about perhaps, starting with the historic districts. When you own an historic house, it's a burden. It's an overlay of, you have to meet all, everybody's building requirements and building codes, but you also have the other overlay, the owner's restrictive zoning that historic districts impose. It's expensive to own an historic house, to keep it up, and I think one compensation would be, yes, you can build an ADU and get the extra income to offset your costs. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anna Marie Hunt, followed by Yolanda Vasquez, please.
Good evening. Anna Maria Windish Hunt, 404 South C Street. I have two houses on my property. I'm for it. I consider it a win-win and a win. Part of it is, we're a tourism area. We've just renamed ourselves as a beach, and I think any of those people, if they rent them out, these are people that are bringing money into our community, and I would like to see more of that. What I do not like is, on the 300 block of B Street, you allowed a McMansion. And I saw those coming in Coconut Grove and destroyed the Grove. And then on 300 block of D Street, you have a house, and they're wedged without a front door or driveway, and they've got three cars, and it's a four-bedroom house. I don't know how that happened. But this here, as far as these two properties, I'm all for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda Vasquez, followed by Jeanette Alfarro, please.
My name is Yolanda. I live at 511 South D. I like the fact, I liked what everyone's saying. I'm actually for the ADUs. I think people need to have an opportunity to age in place, especially when you have larger families. Not everybody's family is the same. My dad also passed away of dementia a couple of years ago. I couldn't bring him to live with me because I had small children. When we say density and proliferation, a lot of the talk that's going around is that these ADUs would be hovels in middle, single-class family neighborhoods, and that's not true. My neighborhood is safe, and for the most part, sometimes neighborhoods implement requirements, making things less affordable. So I really want to hear discussion. I think that we forget a big population, the disabled and the elderly, when we decide that we're only going to have ADUs in certain areas hot to downtown. We should have that opportunity for everyone. Everyone that has a family, everyone that has the lot size requirement, to have an opportunity to age in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanette Alfarro, followed by Janet Serrano. I got that right.
Hi, Jeanette Alfarro, 1102 North B Street. I just want to start out by saying I'm new to Lake Worth. Bought my dream home three years ago, a little 1948 Key West Cottage on a third of an acre. I think I have over 13,000 square feet. It's huge. I have a little garage, detached garage in the back with a door, windows, air conditioning, and plumbing. It has its own separate entryway, and one of the biggest reasons I bought that house was so I could eventually fix it up and let my son move into it, or myself move into it as I age. Came to find out that it's not permitted, so I haven't, I've been sitting on that empty garage now for three years. I would love to see these approved. I'm a school teacher for Palm Beach County over 20 years, and it's really sad that teachers, most of us, have to have a second income. I've been a bartender. I've worked in daycares. I've taught theater in theater schools. Having a rental in my backyard would be a fantastic way for me to keep up with the cost of my main house, as I'm a single woman. I don't know anybody here who's alone and paying all the bills, but it's very daunting to think that you might be one paycheck away from, God forbid, my roof collapses. Having a rental on my property would give me that income. I would also be willing to give back tax dollars to the city, so it's more money for you. Let's talk business, right? If I were to rent it out, I would absolutely promote Lake Worth, because I want repeat customers. If I'm going to rent it out, I want people coming back and, you know, over and over. And I just commend Commissioner Hardy for, you know, spearheading this, and I hope we win.
Janet Serrano, please, followed by Kim Lang.
Hi, 413 North L Street, Lake Worth. I'm not here really to say I'm against or for ADUs. I'm here to learn, and I appreciate you bringing this before the commission, but I do have some concerns. As a small cottage owner, 400 block of North L Street, I am a solid cottage supporter, but I don't want to see the integrity of our historic districts altered with a lot higher density. I need to see a lot more specifics on this issue before I can say whether I support it or whether I'm against it, and I hope you move forward with that in mind, that you just don't jump right into it, that we come up with some real specifics in terms of parking, in terms of exactly how many units per lot, before you decide on the issue. But thanks for taking it up. It is important, and I agree with Mr. Morata, that we do have plenty of vacant land around the city on the Dixie corridor, on Federal Highway. I see vacant lots all around town. And I think what would really be good, we want to promote more townhomes, homeownership, not for rentals. I do agree we need more housing units, but I think that's a better way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Kim, where are you? Kim? There you are. Did I pronounce your name properly, ma'am?
Sure.
Was it close enough?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity for all of us to have our say. It's great to be heard. I'm a fairly new resident to Lake Worth. I've lived here for three years. It's the greatest place I've ever lived. Somebody asked me the other day why I live here when I can live anywhere, and I've had the nicest people that have become like family to me. And all of the points that a lot of people have made tonight about moving family in, growing older and growing older here, you know, when you look at the people in our neighborhood now, who are seniors, and our taxes are going up, and their social security is going down, and college debt is going up, and all of these increasing costs that are affecting this aging community, in my opinion, something has got to give. Either the developers are going to come in and start putting five stories on top of our downtown on either side. Something is going to give. The town has to figure out a way to generate revenue. I'm a huge supporter. Every person in this room who knows me knows that I do nothing but push Lake Worth downtown businesses. It's what I do seven days a week. The Brew Pub, Diane's, unfortunately, I know, they've changed hands. People who come to visit, I give them, I get little cards from all the businesses. Buy one drink, get one free. I leave them out for guests, just to get them to our downtown. Don't go to West Palm, don't go to Del Rey. But they are struggling. I know these owners. It is heartbreaking to see. We need to do something, and this is a great asset, all of these dwellings. A great asset to our community, and we need to be strongly considered and vetted. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Marty Wellfeld, followed by Wes Blackman, please.
Marty Wellfeld, 829 North Lakeside Drive. I'm an old guy, so I brought some notes. This is kind of like a Houston, we've got a problem speech. Lake Worth Beach is the second poorest city in Palm Beach County. That must be the first target of change. Lake Worth Beach downtown needs more people with disposable income for the retail business to flourish. Commissioner Hardy correctly points out that ADUs would not increase slumlord activity because of the cost of building the ADUs. Slumlords aren't going to do that. Most ADUs would be built on the east side of town because of the cost. Building ADUs in the most expensive part of town is an ill-considered strategy for producing affordable rents. In the oft-referenced Portland, Oregon case, that city added 2,000 ADUs. However, it took six years and represented less than a 1% increase in the number of Portland's dwelling units. If Lake Worth Beach were able to mirror the Portland experience, simple ten-finger math would say that that was a waste of time. Lake Worth Beach needs more market rate rentals, like the mid, that'll be up on federal, excuse me, on Dixie, which can have an impact multiple times the ADU proposal in a shorter timeframe. We need to import people with money to spend, not rearrange the folks who already live here. That isn't generating more money downtown. We need to expand our reach. We must not ignore, however, the lower-cost, sustainable housing market, but the problem is that historically, attempts to pressure landlords into properly maintaining their properties and/or penalize slumlords resulted in cries that we are targeting the poor. Lake Worth Beach must ignore those false accusations and push ahead with efforts to ensure safe, clean, compliant housing for all in Lake Worth Beach, regardless of their levels of income. Lake Worth Beach dwelling units skew roughly, oh, 60-ish percentage rental. That is the dominant mode in our city. Our rents are lower than other cities, but the 600-pound gorilla is still that we are the second poorest city in Palm Beach County. All flows from that. the second poorest city in Palm Beach County. All flows from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wellfeld. Wes Blackman, please, followed by William Feldcamp.
Good evening, Commissioners. Wes Blackman, 241 Columbia Drive. I'm not the 600-pound gorilla. Anyway. I'm a professional urban planner, and I think ADUs are generally a good idea. Definitely is on trend within the profession right now. There are a lot of good reasons to look at this, especially as people have said, we have an aging population, and people's biggest investment is their equity in their home many times. And one easy way to do that would be to be more flexible in allowing additional units on single-family properties. There are a lot of safety benefits in terms of having people who might have an eight-to-five job in the main house and want to rent to a retiree, or someone who might be eyes-on-the-street more 24/7, seven days a week, 365, and there with their eyes open, watching things happen or not happen. But I would encourage you to look into this. The devil is in the details, being an urban planner and knowing what lurks in the code. And just, you might want to try a smaller area rather than a larger area at first, and see how it works out. The city has done itself no favors in terms of its history in licensing and regulating rentals. I think you're addressing that issue, but it is a historical issue, and I think that might be some of the pushback you're feeling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackman. William Feldcamp, please, followed by Darren Engel.
William Feldcamp, 108 Lake Avenue. I too am older and have some notes. I'm a retired, registered architect, and have designed hundreds, perhaps thousands, of housing units. I've also owned rental units for 51 years. I have four quick points to make. One is that I am extremely proud of Commissioner Hardy and of this town, this wonderful city, and its place in the vanguard of cities exploring this zoning change. Some of you have read articles in the New York Times over the last couple of weeks about Minneapolis and other cities making these changes. I'm pleased that Lake Worth is discussing this. Number two, property owners back in the 1920s and '30s, some of you may have heard, would often build a garage and an apartment in the rear of the property first, and use that as they saved their money in order to build a real house in the middle of the lot. So this is not a new idea by any means. Many of these examples still exist. There was the issue of adding ADUs will increase eyes on the alleyways and will certainly increase safety. As folks in the building department and Wayne Waters will tell you, earlier zoning regulations, up until quite recently, permitted secondary units. So this effort that we are going through now will bring us back to where we were in earlier times. And fourth, back in the 1990s, records will show, I addressed the then-city commission to propose a change to the zoning code permitting bid and breakfast. And at that time, there was quite a hue and cry from naysayers. Not enough parking. It will bring the wrong kind of people. The bed and berkes will become flop houses. But over several months, that was done. I urged the city to move forward with this work to accommodate the ADU changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feldcamp. Darren Engel, please.
Good evening. Darren Engel, 328 Ocean Breeze. I'd like to thank you for bringing, yeah, William's a little taller than me. Thank you for bringing this discussion to workshop, so that we can hear what you guys think and get some input from us. I think that this is a really, really important issue for the neighborhoods to speak out about, and say whether they want it or don't want it, and the reasons why, and if somebody says they don't want it, why not? It's good to get this talk out and get everybody's understanding. I think one of my concerns, first of all, by the way, I'm neutral. It says it on the card. I'm not for it or against it yet. I think the city may not be quite ready for it yet. And one of my things is, can code enforcement handle it? The building official, can they handle it? We also have a lot of landlords in the city of Lake Worth. Some of them are excellent landlords, and some of them are not. So we also really need to address how things are going to be handled when they go bad, because even in my own neighborhood, I have a few bad landlords, and many of them don't even live in this state. And I purchased a home in a neighborhood where we're allowed to build ADUs, and I purchased it specifically for that. And as my property appraiser said, my property is worth more money because I'm allowed to build an ADU, not because I have one, but because I'm allowed to build an ADU. So that also has to be considered into the equation as well. And we also have to really, really strongly consider LDRs and what enhancements we can make to them to make this work better, and also really, really strongly consider new LDRs that probably are a little bit more form-based. And one of my, one of the things that I'm not for in these ADU discussions is, and this problem exists in my own neighborhood personally, is paving the front yards for parking, please. We've got to make sure that that gets taken care of as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I invoke Rule 6, Section 3, that allows me to ask a question of someone who's given public comment?
Is it a quick question?
It is a quick question. Darren?
Darren.
Darren. So we have a little thing in our rules that allows the Commissioners to ask some quick questions of people who do public comments. Can I ask you a question? Would you mind coming back up? Yeah. I can only ask questions, though. You said that we should consider some changes to the LDRs?
Yes.
If you could name just two or three of them, what would they be?
Ah, I've got more than two or three.
By the way, what is your profession?
I am architectural, project manager, senior project manager at REG Architects. And in addition to architecture work, I also do urban planning, urban design, and historic preservation.
Okay.
So a lot of this is actually, it's an older code, even though it's been revised recently, and there's been a lot of enhancements to it, although some of that's kind of come out in discussion tonight, like what happened to something we used to have. And all the zoning codes that I've worked with in South Florida and in the Midwest of the United States, I do site planning, and I've been done it for over 20 years. I'm not going to say Lake Worth is the most difficult in South Florida. There are certainly more difficult ones. But we really need to be a little bit more consistent, clean it up a little bit, but I think working more towards a form-based code that works with our historic districts, and makes it easier for people when they come to apply for zoning, and allows to streamline the process. Like I said, it's not the worst one. I mean, I could name other cities that are much worse. And we do have excellent staff here, too. So, you know, the staff is very cooperative at helping us through the process. There's a city to the north of West Palm Beach that does not, that does not exist whatsoever. Did I answer your question?
Two or three things that you would change. So one is form-based, as opposed to Euclidean. The other is what?
Correct. One of my most annoying little tiny ones is, do not, when we have to provide required parking, do not allow it in the front setback. So, I mean, we can drive through the front yard to access the required parking, but there's a whole lot of reasons behind that. And one of them is this solar heat sink that comes up when you have paving and you've got cars in the front yard. And there's appearance sake. I consider it kind of, I'd like to have that.
Number three?
Three. Sorry, you got me on the spot, and a lot of things going through my head.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I try, but
Thank you, Mr. Engel.
Seeing that I'm in the ADU mindset.
All righty then. Patty Schultz, followed by Mary Watson, please.
Hello. My name is Patty Schultz, and I live at 25 Harvard Drive. I think that any conversation about increasing rentals in the city of Lake Worth Beach, really, we need to have a dialogue about where Airbnbs and VRBOs are going to fit into that. I am not against this for someone that wants to have a family member, or something of that type of thing. But I don't know how you can regulate that. I just found out two weeks ago that Airbnbs or short-term rentals are not permitted in the city. And for the last year and a half, I live right across the street from an Airbnb that is really out of control. And the problem is that there, no one is enforcing this. No one's around on the weekend with the city to take care of this. And some of the things I'll talk about are, this is a three-bedroom home, and the garage is converted into another bedroom. It's advertised to have 10 guests. So at times, there's been 10 or 11 cars on the street. No one is vetting where these people are from. I mean, honestly, we don't know if these people are pedophiles, or rapists, et cetera, et cetera. It's changed.
Folks, please.
And I think, I think, I think this, what's being proposed tonight is really investor-driven. I think a lot of these are going to turn into Airbnbs. And what's bothering me are, Airbnbs aren't being enforced. So how is this going to be regulated and enforced? That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Mary Watson, please, followed by Robert Morrison.
Mary Watson, 1817 Montague Street. I live in the Lake Osborne area. I really treasure my neighborhood. I know my neighbors. To me, this threatens our way of life. We know each other. We stay together during the storms. We are no problem to you people, because we take care of our own, because we know our own. This, to me, seems absolutely crazy. You are talking about a city that you have promoted that has small-town charm, and now you want to triple the density, and it doesn't sound like it has been well thought out to me. We do have a great problem with sober homes that has not been adequately addressed anywhere. We have them in Lake Osborne. Not only you have the sober homes, this will give them two extra buildings to put up for two more flop houses, which means more drug deaths and more drug dealers. We had them at the end of our street. We went down there because police cannot be everywhere. So we go down with our dogs at the end of the street. Then they went over to Snowden Avenue. There is no parking now. When my friend over at Snowden Avenue has people over for dinner, we have to find out neighbors where we can rent their driveways. And you're talking about this, and also, you're not thinking it through. Atlanta is very different from Lake Worth. We have problems with storms. We have a problem with storm runoff. This means you're going to triple the amount of, what do you call it, the footprint of the homes. Where is that water going to go? It's going to go someplace. When you have storm surge, you are not thinking this through. I'm all for people having their parents in there, doing what they want. You're saying it's a way to make money, but you're going to spend a ton of money developing this land. You have to have people build that. If you're talking about you're short on money, you're going to be a whole lot shorter when you build. And you're going to, it's another gift to developers. I think if anything, Lake Osborne should be allowed to opt out.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Robert Morrison, please, followed by Beth Downey.
Good evening. Robert Morrison, 909 South Lakeside Drive. Heard a lot of talk here tonight, but haven't heard anything as far as the environmental impact goes. I'm neither for it or against it. I don't know enough about it at the moment, so there's, you know, a lot of questions to be asked. This last lady just touched on it briefly. One of the things is, you look at, what is the carrying capacity of the city as far as water and sewage goes? I mean, if we, if we max out on the ADUs, how many more will that be for this city? And what, how much water will have to be provided for those units, as well as the sewage that needs to be taken away? The other thing is, the stormwater runoff, that, what that tells me is that there's going to be more square footage of roofs, of driveways. That's going to end up where? Probably in our lake. And this is a time that we're trying to make the lake more pristine, so I'm wondering what the impact will be on that. That's pretty much it. I mean, a lot of talk, but nothing about the environment. And I think that's key to why people come here. So we need to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Beth Downey, followed by Cynthia Beck. Did I do that right? Cynthia, are you here? Beth, are you here? I hear footsteps. I hope they're Beth's. Here she comes. Around the corner. Hi there. How are you? Are you Beth?
No, I'm Cynthia Beck.
Well, come on, just in case. Come on up. Did you see Beth back in there? Was she hiding?
I don't think so. We're in the overflow room.
Okay, I'll tell you what. Go ahead and go, Ms. Beck, and if Beth shows up, we'll get her in right away.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Cynthia Beck. I live at 1327 North O Street, soon to be Ocean Breeze, North Ocean Breeze. Anyway, a lot of what I was going to say has been touched on, but I just want to say, I bought my house, next month will be 21 years ago. I was a single parent of an infant under one-year-old. Prices back then were, I paid $72,000 for my house, and I thought it was a lot. But I, the way I've been able to afford it is that there was a garage apartment on the property that had already been, a garage that had already been converted to an apartment. So I was able to rent it out to my sister-in-law's sister, and she lived there for a couple of years. Then I asked her to move out, so I could move my mother in, who had been diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease and couldn't live alone anymore. So she lived there for three and a half years, until she went into an assisted-living memory care unit. And the only way I've been able to afford to keep my house over 20 years, and being laid off, and '08, and going back to college to get my master's degree, and doing internships, and working part-time, was by my rental capacity. And if I didn't have that, I mean, it's been a real blessing for me. And yes, I've had family there, and I've also rented it out. I've never done, you know, like a short-term rental situation. But it really has allowed me to keep my home and stay in the neighborhood and city that I love, and I feel really good about that. And I do feel guilty that I am not supposed to be renting it out, but it's been a matter of economics. So I kind of wondered why I signed up to speak, but I outed myself, but
The code enforcement officer's right outside.
Anyway, I do appreciate the opportunity to speak. I do wish it was legal. I think I have to add another entrance to make it legal, but anyway, I'm willing to do that, if I could just rent it legally. Bye. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will stop by and visit her tomorrow.
Thanks.
Just kidding, just kidding. Thank you for your honesty. All right. Beth, I don't see you anywhere, so we're going to pass on you. Let's move to Karen Carr, please, followed by, oh my, Barbara Soaker. Hi. You are? Hi, Karen. Come on down.
Karen Carr, 419 North Palm Way. I just want to first say thank you for the opportunity to express our opinions and our views. I'm undecided. I do have an ADU. We love Lake Worth and Lake Worth Beach. I want some more information. I would like to see additional data presented. So some of my questions are, the lighting and paving of the alleys. If you're going to put additional units, what are you going to do to support that as an asset? Do the ADUs have to confirm, conform? Do the ADUs have to confirm, conform to historic design restrictions for the main house? I live in a historic district. It's very important that we keep the charm and the focus of the area looking the way it does. What percentage of ADUs already exist in the historic district? Seems like to me that there are a lot, so I'd like to see, is that going to significantly increase, stay about the same? What's that impact been? Density doesn't necessarily equal less crime. Look at cities like Chicago. So what design elements are you proposing to reduce crime? I'd like to know what those are. I am concerned about the density increase. I think that's a little, a little much, but if you are allowed to build an ADU, is there going to be a restriction, a requirement for a permanent resident? Or could those buildings potentially both stay empty for a large portion of the year? So, would like more information. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Last but not least, Barbara Soker. If you're here, Barbara. If you're in the next room, stomp your feet.
She was outside somewhere.
What was her last point? She's not in there. Everybody check around yourselves. Check your seats. Anybody seen Barbara? Okay. Well, that's, that ends the public comment.
I think she rents Cynthia's unit.
I'm sorry?
I think she rents Cynthia's unit.
Quite possibly. Okay. We'll be wrapping this up in just a couple of minutes. First of all, I want to thank all of you for your comment and your input this evening. As you know, we normally don't have input in workshops, but this is a very important issue, and you all took time out of your very busy schedules to be here tonight. Of course, we have the best air conditioning in the city, so I'm sure that had something to do with it. But with that, Commissioner Hardy, you want to have any closing comments?
Sure. So, hold on one second. Let's get rid of the echo. This is an issue that I came to somewhat slowly and somewhat out of frustration. When I first got elected, a lady who is a historic preservationist gave me a little handout from the ARP and said that you guys should consider doing this, and then I said, yeah, yeah, okay, whatever. And it seemed to me to be like this very weird thing, and I don't, I don't think I really understood it. And then another person who is an architect, you know, spoke to me about it in passing. I said, okay, that's the second time that someone's spoken with me about this. And since then, there have just been lots of articles written, as Mr. Falkamp said in the New York Times and elsewhere, about accessory dwelling units. And, you know, I'd read a lot about it, and then I really started to look around, and these things that had been more or less invisible to me, walking around the community, I began to notice them. And so that's how I got, I got interested in this issue, and I, I would like to create, I want us to explore going through the process to legalize them within the single-family residential zoning district. And I feel it's important, you know, one of the reasons why I feel it's important to do that is because in a lot of these neighborhoods, there aren't very many housing options. One of the slides in Kristi Donson's presentation was basically saying that a single-family zoning district that doesn't allow for ADUs, doesn't allow really for much flexibility, and that rigidity in the zoning shows up in the population. And you get neighborhoods that, because they don't have housing options for different types of people, they have one type of person in the neighborhood, and then we go and we look at our schools and we say, why are our schools segregated? Oh, my gosh. You know, the schools are based on where you live. And so I felt that this was a way to tackle a lot of issues in Lake Worth by addressing this, this particular zoning issue. The other thing is, you know, I'd say out of frustration that I came to this issue, we have a downtown that is right now not doing very well. And the gut punch for me most recently was seeing a rental sign, a for-rent sign in a store that I love and my favorite building in the town. And, you know, you see small bookstores are thriving in downtowns across the United States, but in this downtown, we have an issue. And one of the issues is, they don't have enough people walking through their door on a, on a, on a day-to-day basis, and it's not just them, it's other stores in the downtown. And so while I feel that we really should densify our corridors, Dixie Highway, South Federal Highway, Lake Lucerne, especially, you know, when I look at what is basically waterfront property right on the other side of I-95 on Lake Worth Road, I think we definitely need to densify those things, and I do not feel that the densities that we currently allow there are enough. And I, while I also don't believe that the process that we allow people to use to get that density, I don't, I don't think it's, it's smooth enough. I would like to go, as Darren said, to a form-based code that's very, very predictable and understandable. I think we should try to find a way to increase the amount of people who are living within these core seven miles. By every, every option should be on the table, and this happens to be an option that does that, that I think will improve our, our local economy, and that will also empower homeowners to be their own individual economic development engines for the city of Lake Worth. And that's one of the reasons why I, I support it. And in addition to that, it wasn't really until much later on that I learned about the aging in place aspect of this thing. The ARP has supported this, that I understand, but just recently, they came out with like an 18-page document educating people about ADUs. And just recently, I was at a conference when the representative from the ARP was there, and this is something that they really feel is extremely important for their members who are, who are seniors or people who are about to become seniors, because it provides them flexibility. And I know this is a fictional example, but the reason why I put in the petition that I wrote and put online was because I felt that it was a case of art reflecting life. It's the case of, well, really, there are, there are two cases, right? So, you know, the first case is the Fonz, right? Fonzie and Happy Days lived in an ADU above Mr. Cunningham's garage, and...
In Milwaukee.
In Milwaukee, right. But, you know, I guess, you know, the point is, that gave Fonzie an opportunity to access a neighborhood that he would not have otherwise been able to access, having that, that choice there for him. The other thing is, you know, from one of my personal favorite shows, The Fresh Prince of Bel Air, you had a situation where Uncle Phil and Aunt Bev have grown children, and you have Hillary Banks, who was always spending too much money, and she didn't really have a good place to stay. She was getting married, so they renovated the poolhouse so that Hillary Banks and her fiance could live in there. And then the fiance died, and Hillary became a weathercaster, and she started making money, so she got out. And then Will and Carlton lived in there. And I could imagine, had the show continued, a retiring Uncle Phil and Aunt Bev downsizing to that poolhome and renting out their main structure. And that's the kind of flexibility that homeowners in the city used to be able to have, that they no longer have, because this city, at one point, took their rights away. So what I want to do is, there are, there are some economic benefits from this to the city. I think there are some benefits to the financial security of the utility. Utilities love ratepayers. My gosh. So the more ratepayers you get the utility, the better their finances work out. And not only that, but you got the downtown, you have the tax base, and then you have, we have an opportunity to restore rights to our property owners in a way that is in keeping with the history of the city. And we don't allow tall buildings here in this city. This is not something that we allow. You know, it, it happens in other cities, and other cities have been able to benefit from that. And so that's not the way that we say we want our density. And so my question is, is that if we can't build big buildings, can we empower homeowners to build small ones? And if we can do neither, what can we do? Right? And so that's, that's, that's the question. How are we going to move forward if we've rejected both paths? For a small town, let's double, triple, quadruple down on that small-town field and really, really go after it. So those are my comments. I appreciate Commissioner Maxwell, Vice Mayor Pretend Maxwell, for allowing this unusual presentation there. That's something that I paid for, because I believe in this, I believe in this for our city. So thank you.
Well, I will say, I will say, I do appreciate your, your passion and devotion to bringing this, this far. I'm sure it took a lot of energy, a lot of work, and probably a couple bucks, as you just mentioned, so I applaud you for that. This is one of those issues that I personally, I can't remember the last time I had so many questions. There's so many questions. And some of the bigger questions that I have are going to be centered around, what's it going to cost the city in terms of infrastructure to position ourselves to be able to accept this type of new development? And, and what's the, the cost-benefit analysis? What's that look like? And I can tell you, you know, when you start talking about the cost of repaving alleys and you talk about the cost of, of creating new utility hookups and things like that, the cost is going to, upfront, is going to vastly outweigh any potential benefit we're going to derive in terms of taxes. And I, so there's a lot of reasons why we need to, you know, sit back and reflect on this. But I will tell you this, and then going back to my comment about Milwaukee, you know, over the years, no matter, there's been a number of issues that this, members of our commission have brought forward, and they've often used Portland, Oregon, and, you know, cities in California. You can't do that, folks. You can't just take good, best practices from a major metropolitan city and necessarily make it meld and work well in this community, or a community of this size. My recommendation would be, Commissioner Hardy, if you can find small cities in America that have got a 50,000 population, that have some of the same demographics that we are, and they've done this, that would be more appealing to me and more, I'd be more willing to listen. But when you have, we'll take Portland, Oregon, for example, and I think the comment that was made by your consultant was, there was a reduction, I think she said there was only like six more cars or something. They have a mass transit system. People are already using mass transit in Portland, Oregon. Mass transit in South Florida is an oxymoron. People are not going to use, we've shown to date, folks are not willing to give up their cars here in South Florida. That's because our, our land, our, our development goes like this and not like this. And the reason it doesn't go like this is because people don't want it to go like this. So, you know, there's pros and cons and for everything. So this, I think we need to explore a little bit further. I'm going to ask Commissioner Robinson, do you have any questions or comments that you'd like to make tonight before we figure out where to go with this?
I want to thank Commissioner Hardy for bringing it forward. The, the topic is important. I'm disappointed in the planning and zoning department that hasn't presented this as, as a real option. I'm disappointed that we were down two commissioners that I value their opinion. I'm proud of our citizens and their interest and passion for, for and against. This is a property rights issue. I'm looking forward to moving it forward, and I, you know, if, if we don't want to talk about growth, what, what will happen? If we don't want to talk about ADUs, we don't want to talk about heights, we don't want to talk about success, successful businesses downtown. Change is, change is always difficult. I don't think we're that much different than Portland or any other very small 20, 30,000 community in, in the country. I'm really pleased of the, the reasonable conversations that have, that I've heard I'm, I'm looking forward to, moving forward with the opportunity to provide property rights to the people that want to do ADUs, and the people that don't want to do them aren't going to do them. But when you take 70% of the community and deny an opportunity, I don't, I don't think that's quite right. So...
Okay. Commissioner, Mr. Hardy, I'll give you one more, one more bite of the apple, if you can keep it very, very brief, please.
Sure, sure. Second pass. As far as the infrastructure costs, do we, do we charge for hookups when there are new units? Okay, so, so we charge for that. We, we make people pay us for that, and we only give them incentives, basically, when it's a really large project like the Mid. Okay. Now, on the Mid, and, you know, a lot of people say, why don't you focus on Dixie Highway, you know, or South Federal Highway? One of the problems that we've had with that is that, you know, like if you look at the Mid, we, how much money do we give them in incentives?
Okay. The base economic investment incentive was $165,000. That was across the board with electric, water, sewer, and stormwater?
160, we, we gave them like one point.
That was infrastructure that was going to be done already by the city in its capital improvement plan. They wanted it advanced, so we said, if you put it in for us, then we will pay for you, pay it back. That's going to be money that's already going to be expended anyway.
And as far as electricity and stuff, are we giving them an incentive on that?
Did he just say 150?
Okay, all right. So...
You were 200 last time.
What we...
I guess, my point is, we have to spend money on projects on Dixie Highway, and even after we spend money on projects on Dixie Highway like the Mid, if you look at the rents that are coming in, they're not, you know, market that you would see, for example, in West Palm, right across the canal. So Dixie Highway is, yeah, I mean, the Mid is like $800 less, all our units, it was actually in the paper the other day, from what you would get if you were across the canal. And so we gave them a pretty large incentive package, and it's, it's tough to get things going there. So this is something that is a little more incremental, and it's not a silver bullet. It's not like one big project that comes and it's lumpy, and then you wait for another few years for another project like that. This is, as the lady center presentation, it's, it's more incremental in nature. So we charge, as far as infrastructure goes, you know, we charge hookups. We also, for ADUs in our code, it says we'll charge a stormwater fee, right? Okay, which handles some of the infrastructure as far as runoff and things like that?
Yeah, that, that would be a, one small cost, it'd just be based on the number of units, it's a per-unit cost for a stormwater.
Right, okay. And then, as far as comparable examples, I actually have a list, and this is actually an old list. It's, it's proliferated a lot more. All these towns are in the Pacific Northwest, but as far as small towns with no transit, Corvallis, Tiggerd, Oregon, Oregon City, Tuolotin, Oregon, Westland, Oregon, Forest Grove, Orleans, all these towns are below 50,000 people. And then you got towns like every city in New Hampshire. New Hampshire passed a law and said, cities, you guys cannot ban these. You must allow them in all zoning districts, and they told them what things they can't regulate. California did the same. So every single town in California has to allow these. Oregon did the same. So you have far-left cities, like, far-left states like California, and states that are kind of middle-of-the-road like New Hampshire, and then Decatur, Georgia, is another really small city. Golden, Colorado, another small city. So I think it's, it's workable. There's a list, if you go on accessory dwellings, you can get a list that's not quite updated of the cities that allow these. And as far as historic neighborhoods, right now in our code, we require the ADUs architectural style to match the architectural style of primary dwelling. Is that, is that accurate?
We would require any addition to a structure to be evaluated based on the historic character of that house and that neighborhood, absolutely.
Right, okay, yeah.
Commissioner, you said you would be very brief.
Okay.
This is not, we're going to be on breeze.
That's in there, okay. I appreciate you guys for hearing me out.
Thank you. All right, city manager?
Well, this is a workshop. We haven't, this is, I think, a very large opportunity, and I want to thank the planning department for continuing to work on improving the zoning. Could you just do a pencil view of what is excluded or what's included, what we're talking about?
Why don't you bring the city down to half at...
You know, the 70% was good on the pie chart, but...
It's hard to see on here. I'm going to zoom back in a little bit.
Yeah, do it at Lake Worth Road at the bottom of the, and you can do the top half.
So this, this color here, this light tan color, is the single-family residential zoning district. So if you follow that around the map, these are the areas in here, over here in Lake Osborne will be included, over here, east of Federal will be included. And I won't get into where the historic districts, but basically, our historic districts are all on the side, so these are your single-family residential districts up here, as well as in the north, all the way up into Lake Cove and over in the College Park, is all the single-family residential zoning district. That's what's currently excluded from allowing ADUs in the city.
And we don't know how many exist now that, in those areas.
We don't have a business license registration that we can click on and say how many are accessory dwelling units. We have a classification for our residential rental, so it's not a quick, easy process for us to simply click on a few buttons on our database and pull out a number. And to be honest, everybody here, we know that there are existing dwellings that have occurred for a long time, that have been converted, that we don't track yet. So I, we have no idea... So I, we have no idea right now, being able to give you a good number of how many second dwellings as accessory dwelling units are on existing lots today.
And for that reason, I suspect, you know, we have trouble keeping up with code, identifying these units with the Airbnbs and the vacation rentals, whatever. And I think the big question we have to ask ourselves is how are we going to police this? Because not everybody's going to step up and say, here's my building permit, and, oh, by the way, I want my license, I want to, I want to identify myself, so I pay the bed tax, everything goes with that. So, you know, folks, at the end of the day, when 70% of our zoning map is, is residential, what do you say to the 70% of the population that has a single-family home, and you say, you know what, you've been there for 30 years, but that doesn't matter anymore? We're going to let your neighbor, if they, for whatever reason decide they want to put income, income-producing property on their property? Why, that's not what we bought our homes for. That's not what we bought our homes for. Please, no, no grumbling in the, in the chambers.
If we legalize it, it will give us the, the average to inspect.
They're not being inspected now.
Because, because they, they are not.
No, they are legal in some parts of the city. He just heard him say, we don't have a, a good handle on how many there are, if, if they've been inspected, or if they've been licensed. And the next question I have, and I don't know if you can ask this, William Waters, but if I put accessory dwelling on my home, seems to me I, I won't be able to homestead that property, will I?
Yeah, you can, you can still homestead it with an accessory dwelling on it, as long as you own and, and live in the principal structure.
So you don't, you don't, you can't take, the, the property praiser does not take a slice out of your exemption because you have a portion of your property that's used, I'm sorry?
I don't, I don't believe so, no.
Okay, all right. All right. One more bite of the apple from each of you, and then we're going to go back to the City Manager. Herman, I guess I'll let you, Mr. Robinson, you go first.
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm wondering whether, being absent two members, we, we need to talk about this again, and maybe the public can, can change their, have more input, I don't know. But I, I think we should, consensus of three people tonight, I, I would like to move forward with Planning and Zoning, working on a, coming back with an ordinance to provide the opportunity for ADUs in our city.
Okay. Well. Any more comment?
Not at this moment.
Well, this is your last chance.
Unless we're going to get out of here in the next 30 seconds.
We're going to get out of here by 11 o'clock.
Okay.
Commissioner Hardy?
Surely. I feel the same way as Herman, I, I would like to see staff come back with an ordinance that creates a workable process that we can discuss and debate, that's written down, an actual concrete proposal. I think the more you pin down details, the more people can, can sink their teeth into as far as what they might potentially be for or against, right? Or what they might want to tweak or change. So, the other thing is, in this town, we have made certain zoning changes that have taken away a person's property rights. And one example I'll give you is, on the west side of I-95, well, actually, the first ever phone call I got was from a lady in a mobile home park on the west side of I-95, near where I live now. And that area, when she, you know, got her mobile home, was zoned MH7, or whatever it was. And the commission, a few years ago, changed that zoning from mobile home to industrial. And so she was the person who got the rug pulled out from underneath her feet, and not in a way that added to her property rights, but her structure is now non-conforming. Everyone's structure in that mobile home park is now non-conforming. People who want to add a porch cannot do so with a permit, because it went from being zoned MH7 to being zoned industrial. It's the first phone call I got, I verified with staff, you know, when I got there, and that was the process. And the idea was, well, we have a goal here in the city. We want to turn this into an industrial park, and this is what we're going to do. And so here we have a case where, yes, we are changing the zoning, but to me, it's a case, you know, like, like, you know, I, I, I won't name a partisan political issue, but if, if you don't want it, you don't have to have it, right? Your, your, your neighbor can avail themselves of it, and in a lot of cases, you can't even see it. You know, it was funny, the lady on the, the news, you know, Marina, and I've been to her house several times, I had no idea the lady had an ADU in her backyard. So this is something that if you do it right, if you code it correctly, it can be a benefit to people without diminishing their neighborhoods, and it's, 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 it's giving more property rights rather than taking property rights away. And it's something certainly that I support, but I would like to see staff come back, based on the consensus that we see today.
Okay, well, there, unfortunately, there is not consensus, because I don't support this at this time. So we don't have consensus.
Two to one?
You got to have three, got to have three votes to move forward.
Is that true?
It's a majority of the people present.
Well, I, I really, I appreciate the fact that we've had this conversation, and I, again, I want to thank Commissioner Hardy and, and his presentation on it. I, I'm certainly looking forward to another conversation when we don't begin it with, I'm just going to say no. That, that's, that is not.
Excuse me, Commissioner Robinson, you're out of line. Nobody said no.
No, I, I'm looking forward to the next conversation.
Well, I don't know if it's going to be the next one, that's, we have to decide right here. City Manager?
If a consensus isn't two to one, then, then what do we do?
You have to have at least three people, and we don't have three people, unfortunately.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum, yeah.
You must have three votes.
We could have passed an ordinance with three people, because we have a quorum, and it's a majority of those present.
I'm afraid you're incorrect on that one, you have to have three.
You have to have.
So, City Manager, where to go?
From a practical standpoint, not talking about for's or against, I'd like to get a couple pieces of information out on the table from staff. Is there any other, because if I understood correctly, there has to be a comp plan change if this is considered, as well as the prerequisite in code. Is there a cycle that's coming up that there are other items? Because taking items individually is not something we normally do, we try to group them together, because there's attorney cost, advertising cost, and the machinery of moving things. What's your current schedule for the rest of the year?
We look, back up a second. The fact that we just recently adopted a comprehensive plan, and we've made some recent changes to it, it's time for us to look at our land development regulations and bring them in line. And this is a very typical part of the process, is once you adopt the, a major plan, and then these amendments, we need to bring the, the land development regulations in line with those recent comprehensive plan changes. So that's something we'd like to bring forward, to look at those. If the commission all decides, and, and we want to move forward with this, we could look at a, at a comprehensive plan amendment, which would take us four to six months to get that through the, the meat grinder, if you will, and in the process, and then we could fold that into the land development regulation amendments to, to bring it forward as part of a comprehensive amendment to line us up with the comprehensive plan. So we're looking probably, at this point, six to eight months out, before we could have something as terms of an ordinance ready to adopt. Doesn't mean we can't continue the conversation and nail down the details of what we want to do.
For the, for the comp plan amendment?
For the comprehensive plan, and then bring forward a, an amendment to the land development regulations.
And that has a lead-in, that has to go to the P&amp;Z, the Historic Preservation?
Sure, and, and the comprehensive plan has to go to the state, state has to evaluate that it, that it meets all the state guidelines, then it comes back, and we adopt. So it's not impossible, just take, there is a realistic timeline we have to look at.
My point in asking that question is, I already knew the answer. The blessed bureaucracy that be, both here and in the state level, is not a quick process, even if you're looking for a quick answer. There is process. I would recommend, as your professionals, that we try to piggyback any of the items, including this one, if you determine or not to go forward with it, that's your, that's your choice, that we try to coordinate those in a package, so that we're not doing a lot, because it is an expensive process for us to spend the time, and the staffing, and the attorney's cost to, to transact a, a change to the comp plan. So that's one thing, and I just wanted to make sure we got that out there. How we go forward with determining if this is something you want to include in that bundle, if we want to call it that, is something, there's probably time and places for us to have that conversation.
Well, this is how I look at it, okay? We don't have consensus here this evening to move forward.
Let me, let me comment on that, so that we don't go back and forth on that. You need a majority to have a consensus.
A majority of what?
It's not the majority of those present, unless you have a quorum. Your quorum is three, so unfortunately, it would have to be three. Two people can never make up a majority on a, a board of five. So you need all three of you to move forward the consensus, and you don't have that apparently tonight. But I would recommend that maybe you put it back on the next agenda, and we could ask the mayor and the vice mayor to review this meeting, it was a very informative meeting, so that there could be a brief discussion, less than 30 minutes hopefully, so we won't end up back in another workshop. And maybe you could get a more solid consensus, or a vote on direction. You need direction, staff needs direction, and it makes no sense for staff to hear two tonight, and then find out later that there was not a majority who were in favor of it in the first place, and you've already spent a lot of money to get to a, a certain place, and you can't get there.
Madam Attorney, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Let's say this isn't a workshop meeting, this is a regular meeting.
Correct.
And we have a quorum. Could we pass ordinances?
You cannot. I think your code specifically says that a majority is three. And so, in those situations, and that's usually the way it is. So you can, you can have four, and then, three is a quorum, four people present, you still would need three to pass something. There's never a situation, under your code as written, that I, I don't think, where you could have two people carry the day on an, on ordinance, definitely not on an ordinance, maybe on a resolution.
So when you say you think, sort of.
I didn't look at it specifically.
Okay.
I want to be clear.
So, so a quorum really isn't a valid, legal, I mean, what, what's a quorum, if not a quorum?
I'm looking in your rule.
Would you like to be recognized, Ms.?
While we're doing that, while we're doing that.
Would you like to be recognized?
I'm sorry?
Would you like to be recognized?
Please.
Go ahead.
I'll turn my light off then. I would ask that we could put it on the agenda for our next meeting, and.
Sure.
Okay.
If we're going to move forward, we'll move forward, if, if the other two.
And I found the rule. Found the rule. Rule two. A majority of the city commission shall constitute a quorum. A smaller number may adjourn a meeting, or recess a meeting to a certain time. No ordinance, resolution, or motion shall be adopted, except by the affirmative vote of at least three members of the city commission.
Makes sense.
Woo!
Okay.
You're welcome.
All right, so, so here's, here's what. Let me make one quick comment. Here's a dilemma, I, I do agree, I, I think it would be appropriate to have the other two weigh in. Normally, I wouldn't. I think, you know, it's our responsibility to, to make the meetings, and if we're not here, you're not here. Your voice can't be heard.
I agree with that.
Okay. I might be willing to make that exception, and move, and say that we have the other two weigh in. However, I do not want to repeat workshop to go through this again. They're going to have to review the, the tape, or whatever, on their own time, okay, to get caught up to speed. We're not going to have two meetings to benefit them. We've already, we've, we've come, and we've done our work.
I also don't want to pay Christie twice.
No, 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 she's not coming back. Okay, so, how do we, how do we navigate that and assure that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we have five people, and all of a sudden, we're, somebody's going to get the bright idea that they're going to figure out a arm wrestle three of us into doing something differently than what we intend to do this evening? That's my question.
Vice Mayor Potem, from staff's perspective, to have us come back to the next meeting, are you assuming that we would have an ordinance ready? Because we obviously don't have enough, so, okay, good, I just want to make that clear, thank you, because we haven't, we don't have enough direction to craft an ordinance, because there's issues that have been talked about but not resolved, or even hashed out in, in great detail. That would require most likely another workshop, honestly.
Here's.
When you're talking about parking, and those other issues, I heard a lot of things.
That's right.
There's a huge checklist, and I don't have a.
I've got dozens of questions here that need to be vetted.
And if we, if we crafted a straightforward ordinance, it would be.
And I can tell you right now, the questions are not inexpensive questions to be answered, okay? There is a direct fiscal impact, a significant fiscal impact, to implementing this type of a program. Not just in staff time and energy, but in practical implementation in the communities, in the neighborhoods. So these are all questions that have to be answered. We are far, far, far away from even having a discussion about an ordinance. So, again.
I agree.
How do we move to the next level with all five of us, without getting hoodwinked by three of us somehow, to turning into something different and going down a different, you know, rabbit hole? Because that's, 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 that's the condition, that's the condition I'm standing here this evening, okay? Because we only have three of us, and we're going to play a little bit of, you know, trading here. So if we're going to go forward and have all five, then we have to come up to an agreement that we'll all stick to, and not overrun the next time we have an opportunity to get together. So what do we do? Commissioner Robinson?
Can I, we're not, I'm not asking for an ordinance at our next agenda, but can we talk about this in the request to have Planning and Zoning work on an ordinance? And if they, if we don't have a, a positive vote to, to move forward, then we, they won't be working on an ordinance that we don't want.
And Vice Mayor Potem, the.
Is that efficient?
The expectation would be to clear all those and give staff good direction within the half hour, that an item would exist. It, it, it's going to be a lengthy discussion, I would imagine, but that's.
I, I'm sorry.
We'll each have another workshop.
What, what I had in mind, really, was kind of allowing this a little bit with two commissioners, and not really that much more public comment. You just need the other elected officials to weigh in. The three of you have weighed in, they will hear that, let them make their comments, and the, the question is whether or not to give direction to staff to move forward.
Yes.
That's what we're looking for.
We're not asking.
If there are three noes, this issue ends at the next meeting, and we don't have to talk about it again. If there are three yeses to move forward, that doesn't mean bring an ordinance back necessarily. As the, the manager said, it may mean more workshops, more discussions, paper, meetings in the, in the neighborhoods, you know, you've, you've heard the, the residents speak about that. But at least there will be some kind of a vote to move forward. Not a lengthy discussion, not a replay of this meeting, not staff's presentation again. Staff already made a presentation. The burden will be on the elected officials. That's kind of what I had in mind, and I think that's probably the safest way to move.
So, Madam Attorney.
Thank you.
From a practical standpoint, when the other two have the opportunity to review, in whatever manner they choose to review, how do we, in practice, bring it to this commission? Is it just a no discussion? Do we have three yays or nays to move forward? Is that how we're going to do it? Because I think that's the way we really should do it.
I think you can do it that way, because you've given the public an opportunity to speak at this juncture here, and the law requires that you give the public an opportunity to speak, and you've already done that. So you could, I, I don't know if that's your normal practice, but you could limit it to a discussion, not just, but not just to allow them to speak, but, I mean, you are a five-person board, so you need to be able to speak to each other, so maybe you just address each other.
Only here.
Correct.
Okay.
I just don't want the next opportunity for the five of us to get together on this issue, to turn into a long, protracted, back and forth.
Less than 30 minutes.
Less than 30 minutes.
It's got to be less than 30 minutes. We're not going back to workshop on this. That's what you said.
Correct. All right. Then if, if everybody agrees.
Is that okay?
Only if it can be done in 30 minutes.
Folks, this is a very, what you're asking to be done here, at the end of the day, I cannot understate this. I don't want to understate this. This is a big deal. This is a big deal. And staff has got a lot of projects in the hopper. And we're coming up on budget cycle and all these other things that we have to do as the normal course of our business. This is going to take a tremendous amount of time of staff, even to get us to the point where we have to vote on it. And you know what? We still have the neighborhoods that got to weigh in and all. This is going to be a very, very lengthy and expensive, just to get to the, ask the question. So I think we need to be very careful before we just jump into this and say, oh, I think it's a great idea because Portland, Oregon thinks it's a great idea. So... How do you want to, how do you want to do this? City manager, go ahead.
Vice Mayor Potem, I would suggest that we craft an item in such a way, and then we get with the mayor and the vice mayor. We make sure they watch this meeting. And we do as the attorneys recommending so that you can get to the meat of the matter quickly and make some decisions and provide some direction to staff on how to proceed. And we can do that at the next meeting.
Can we make it the first agenda item on, on the agenda?
Our agenda's not laid out that way, but yes, we'll make it as early as possible under new business. And one other thing, if you're going to be closing out shortly, I wanted to clarify, it wasn't said that the, the mayor and the vice mayor are actually attending the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and it wasn't expressed why they weren't here. So that was, they're part of their travel plans. And I wanted to convey that. So I'm sure they'll watch this, and this will be part of the discussion as we bring it, bring it forward. Okay?
So if the three of us could agree that we'll spend no more than 30 minutes getting to a decision one way or the other, then we can adjourn this meeting. You don't, you don't agree?
I'm, I'm looking forward...
We can kill it right now.
Well, how are we going to kill it?
Because you don't have consensus.
But there's, we can't have consensus. It's, you know, it's BS that we're even, you know...
There's no motion.
There's no motion to workshop.
We got the motion to adjourn, no?
Retract! Can we agree that we're going to have an agenda item for discussion?
Exactly right.
Just one of you has to walk...
A smaller number may adjourn.